Good evening. Tonight, we are honored to have Etta Wilton, 7th grade student from Willow Springs, to lead us in the pledges. Etta models the qualities of a well-rounded, engaged learner who strives to make a positive impact on her community. A proud, longtime Lovejoy student, Etta has been a part of our district family since kindergarten. She is an exceptional student who plays the violin in chamber orchestra and serves as a member of the Student Superintendent Advisory Council. Outside of school, Etta is a competitive gymnast and is already planning for a future in the medical field, aspiring to become either a physician's assistant or a neurosurgeon. Etta enjoys studying mathematics, social studies, and Japanese. She truly exemplifies the Lovejoy ISD spirit through her joy for learning, her dedication to the fine arts and athletics, and her unwavering commitment to excellence. Thank you, Etta, for representing Willow Springs.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States for America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Agenda item number six is recognition. We begin our meetings by recognizing the achievements of our staff and our students in our school because they are at the heart of our mission as a district. Tonight, we will recognize our Boys and Girls Cross-Country Team, Drs. Anne Basie.
Members of the board, Superintendent Cordell, thank you for having us tonight for student recognitions. We will honor our Boys and Girls Cross-Country Teams tonight for their accomplishments at the UIL State Cross-Country Meet. We'll start with the Boys Team recognitions first and then move on to the Girls Team after that. So it is my pleasure to introduce our head Boys Cross-Country Coach, Coach Logan Kelly.
Thank you for recognizing our team here tonight. First off, I have Tristan Arseneau, Kipton Dubois, Carter Ewing, Joey Reed, Reeve Ravel, This year's Boys Team stayed among the very best programs in the state of Texas and continued the incredible legacy of our Lovejoy Cross-Country program. This season, the varsity Boys Team achieved the following milestones: They qualified for the Regional Championship for the 19th consecutive year, earned our fifth Regional Runner-Up Title in program history, and qualified for the State Championship for the 18th consecutive year. And this team finished in the top 10 in the state of Texas. In addition, several of our athletes earned statewide recognition. Tristan Arseneau, Joey Reed, and Arjun Sharma received all-region team honors, and Tristan Arseneau, he had all-state team honors as well. I always talk to the Boys Team about consistency and how that consistency will contribute to our team's success, and that's exactly what this team did, finishing as a top-10 program in the state of Texas. Not only with their hard work and dedication, these young men are men of great character and just, they do everything that represent Lovejoy in the best way possible, anything they take part in. I'm so incredibly proud of each and every one of you. I thank the board for having us this evening, recognizing us for our success this year. So let's give these young men a big round of applause for their success this year.
Next up, we will recognize our Girls State Champion Cross-Country Team, so I'd like to introduce Coach Carly Littlefield.
Good evening. All right, I'm gonna tell you the girls' names. Emily Armstrong, Cameron Benson, Bridgette Bernal, Sophia Dominguez, Lily Fogel, Talia Orsalik, and Harper James. Whoops, those were backwards. So, this group was on a mission this year. We were runner-up last year after winning for three years in a row, and so they were not super excited about that, even though I tried to tell them, "Guys, second is awesome." They were not satisfied, so we went back to the drawing board. We got us a little baby freshman in there that gave us a little boost, and this is the result. So it was a, it was a super fun day, super proud of them. Cameron was an All-Stater, top 10, and that was her fourth year in a row, which is incredibly hard to do, to get top 10 all four years. And then CCCAT All-State, Bridgette, Cam, Emily, and Sophia, which are your first four there, received CCCAT All-State honors. But this team, they went undefeated this season. No 5A teams beat them, and we raced probably 90 to 100 teams throughout the season. We raced Oklahoma teams, Arkansas teams, Texas teams, 6A teams, and no 5A teams, no Okla-- the only teams that beat us were Flower Mound, which was second in 6A, and Katie, which was third in 6A. So incredibly talented team, eighth year of regional champions consecutively, a lot of years of district champions consecutively. But like Coach Kelly said, of course, the thing that makes us the most proud is just who they are as people. They represent us so well everywhere they go. They're leaders in school, they're leaders in the community. And what people don't see is what they do on the track and over at celebration. The work that they put in is unbelievable. The sacrifices that they make to do this sport, which is very hard, you know, getting, going to sleep, getting their eight to nine hours, eating right, everything that they do and the work that they put in is absolutely unbelievable for teenage girls. So, super proud of you guys.
All right, agenda item number seven, public comments. Ms. Taylor, do we have any public comments?
No, me.
Okay, with no public comments submitted, we will proceed with our agenda. Mr. Wood, would you please lead us in our invocation?
Yes, please bow your heads. Dear God, we gather this evening grateful for the blessing of our educational community. We're thankful for the dedicated educators, exceptional students, and supportive families that make Lovejoy such a special place. Blessed are the efforts of all of those who work tirelessly to provide our students with the best possible education experience. Guide our discussions and deliberations so that they may reflect our dedication to continuous improvement and preservation of Lovejoy's legacy of excellence. May your grace continue to shine upon us. Amen.
Agenda item number nine, notifications. The board book this evening contains notifications for public information requests, resignations, and cabinet reports. Are there any questions or comments on these items? Hearing none. Agenda item number 10 is our consent agenda. The board book for the meeting today contains consent agenda items, including prior meeting minutes and our monthly finance report. Are there any questions on these items, or is there an item that a trustee would like pulled for separate consideration? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion in a second. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number 11, we have a Celebration of Learning presentation, which spotlights the fantastic teaching and learning happening in our Lovejoy classrooms. Tonight, we will focus on the STEM program. Dr. Tinsley.
Thank you. We are super excited about this presentation tonight, and I just want to take you back to one of the district goals, one of the superintendent's goals, is to operationalize our STEM program guide. As you know, the work that we were doing in 2425, that was refining our program guide for STEM education. So, we are putting that into practice this, this time, this year. So, I'm super excited about what we're about to share with you, and I just always want to lift up, just a reminder, when we go back to our Lovejoy 2030 strategic planning, this was part of what the committee wanted us to focus on, and I want to lift up what this reflects in the STEM education that, the work that we are doing. Advancing teaching and learning by valuing risk-taking and innovation as strategic target 1.1. Also, increasing opportunities for stu-- that are authentic, hands-on, inquiry-based. I think you're gonna hear about that and see some examples of that tonight. Emphasize open-ended problem-solving opportunities through online pre-K-12 STEM programming, and then identify and develop future-ready skills. So, all of that will be emulated tonight in the presentation and taken it back to our goals in Lovejoy 2030. I am honored tonight to introduce two of our staff members that have been pivotal in this work. First of all, I want to introduce Jenny Perez. Jenny is an 8th grade science teacher and department head at Willow Springs Middle School. And when I think about Jenny, I think about her as an early adopter. When we bring something new forward, she always brings the energy and the excitement and the willingness to execute. So, she is going to be part of this presentation tonight, sharing with you about what's being presented and what she's facilitating in her classroom. Also, I don't know if you've met Cole Hawkins. Cole is new to our team here in the Curriculum and Instruction Department. He is our STEM coordinator and has been a breath of fresh air. He comes with innovation, enthusiasm, and excitement. A big focus this year has not only been on STEM education, but on, on supporting our science pre-K through 12. So, I am pleased to hand this presentation over to them.
Well, thank you guys for having us. And also, as we kind of get into this, just huge thank you to Lovejoy Foundation for providing us with some fun little materials. I'm just gonna let you guys get your hands on them. These were integral to what happened at Willow Springs and what we're gonna share about today. They're very delicate. They've got a lot of technology in them. And then also, to instructional technology, without whom this wouldn't have been possible. They were able to push out some applications to our student devices that they were able to use day-of and really made things super easy for not only 8th grade, but 7th grade as well. And we're just, we're very grateful for all of that to help make this effort come to life. So, the big thing that I hope you guys see through all of this and the continuing endeavors of STEM is that it's more than just a siloed program that happens in isolation. It's a way of thinking that bridges across content. It's going to encourage inquisitiveness, persistence, and intellectual risk-taking and problem-solving on parts of both our students and our teachers. They have a great way of doing that, and they're already doing it. So what we're gonna try to do, what we are gonna do with our STEM program, is try to encourage our teachers to find ways to use those skills and foster those skills that enhance 21st century skills, future-ready, and help them bridge content areas with those, right? So we're going to enhance those across disciplines, not just in science, not just in, in technology courses or CTE, but across the gambit. Yeah, that's all for that slide. So again, these are those future-ready skills, but I really like this quote that's at the, at the top of this slide here. It says, "We're preparing our students for a world that doesn't yet exist with skills or with technologies that don't, that aren't already invented, and they're gonna solve problems that we don't even know yet." I think that's a great way of thinking about what we're trying to do with our students. We're trying to prepare them for all these things, and whatever ways we can do that, STEM helps us get there. So encouraging STEM thinking across disciplines and encouraging mindsets that benefit that STEM thinking is gonna be integral to enhancing these future-ready skills for our graduates. So, to give you an idea of where I'm coming from as a step into this role and where we, the communications that we've kind of had as a CNI team regarding STEM, initially, at the beginning of this year, we kind of stepped back and took a look at the processes of STEM in our district so far and put ourselves on the continuum. Using TEAs, what do you, assessment items, self-assessment items, we looked at where we were. And we were a little bit towards the beginning stages of STEM integration, which is great because we can take that and that gives us something to build upon. And so, some big things that we were really trying to, that we could also leverage, is that during curriculum writing this summer, we heard from teachers and community members that we want more in experiences with STEM, but we want them to be embedded into curriculum. We don't want us to just pause and then take a second to do a STEM and then come back into our content. We want it to flow through. And so that is the goal with what we're going to try to do as we move towards these higher ends of the model for STEM in Lovejoy. The, the most important, or well, a good thing that we could do with science in particular is that we're at a hinge point. Our teachers have had a year to become familiar with their resource in science, and so now we have the ability to look at the pieces that worked and find ways that we could integrate STEM design challenges, both with the resource that we have and in ways that could leverage supplemental resources that we already have, things like ADI, to support what's going on. And so again, the big goals, you can see my list of goals here that I have here for, for STEM, and that a lot of it has to do with stewardship of our resources, the things we already have, trying to find ways to enhance the use of those, but also trying to find deeply embedded opportunities to enrich the curriculum that teachers are already doing, trying to find ways to get it much deeper than just surface-level understanding. And so, the, the goals here, we, we've done a lot of work with getting with teams across grade levels, and you can see a few of those here in the middle. The goal was TEAC alignment. With science in this transition, we have 3D learning, and that's encouraging science and engineering practices, it's encouraging content acquisition, and it's encouraging recurring themes and concepts, all of which you'll see through the design challenge we're gonna show today, but all of which have been embedded in these examples that are here on the screen next to me. You see a save-the-snowman design challenge that Puster did. They designed a cooler to save a little frozen water bottle from melting and got to see how well their cooler did over time and measure the amount of water that poured out and see if Frosty survived. We saved weathermen in 2nd grade, very important thing to do, but we looked at the structural components of the materials, that they were, the physical properties of what they were dealing with, and then had to save a weatherman from a rainstorm. We're going to be incorporating Wigglebots with circuits, which are just a little simple solo cup that spins around in a circle, but uses simple electronics like motors and LEDs and batteries that students will get to choose from and integrate into a design that they're choosing. And we've done balloon cars at, at Willow, or sorry, not at Willow, at Sloane Creek, 5th grade integrated some of those. We've had roller coasters. It's, it's been a very busy STEM year, and teachers have been very willing to jump into those things, teachers like Jenny, and very thankful for those opportunities with these teams. But the focus of all of this is fit. It's not something extra. We're trying to enhance the curriculum that we already have, not put it on pause to do a STEM challenge. So, we're working on integrating what we're doing in the classroom to incorporate those engineering design skills and to enhance those future-ready skills, too. The big piece that you'll see at the bottom here has been community engagement through these engineering design challenges. Particularly at our younger grades, we've had the opportunity to get tons of volunteers in the classroom. It's been great. We've had, specifically at Hart, we had a donation of lots of materials that the, like, so many materials. They're, they're overflowing right now with shirts and, and packing peanuts from their, their coolers designs. And the students were able to use those, and, and they were so grateful for it. And things like that have been great for enhancing the design challenge beyond just what's on paper, and we're, we're very grateful to our community for that. So again, just talking about the three-dimensional nature of science, how this is a natural fit for science, and this was because, this was what made it such a target area for starting this initiative, I say initiative, but really just enhancing what they're already doing, right? And incorporating those science and engineering practices, if you hear me say SEEPs, that's what I'm talking about, and those RTCs, which are the recurring themes and concepts, things like patterns, cause and effect, form and function, that kind of stuff. And you can see the layers of, of learning that were here. Guys, this was, this was everything in this particular design challenge that Jenny and her crew stepped into. You see at the middle, the content TEACs that were covered, but then next to it, this is all the SEEPs that come straight out of TEAs documents. These are all the RTCs that were incorporated in some form or fashion into this. It may not have been the focus, but it was definitely a part that was played into the learning experience for these students. And, so what we're doing in this is we're leveraging a resource we already have, argument-driven inquiry, and what we're doing is finding the touchpoints and similarities for engineering because they're so common between the two different processes. I say different processes, they're the same. You're still asking questions, you're identifying a problem, you're making a plan, you're making a plan, you're creating, testing, evaluating, reflecting, and all of those processes you can see in the steps of ADI that are on the screen before you. What we're doing is we're leveraging something we already have and making it even better and trying to find ways to use the full extent of those resources because ADI does offer a ton of engineering experiences for teachers to utilize. That's what we did with this one. Yeah, that's that one. So, I believe I can get Jenny to jump in on this one. Yeah, we had two big goals for Willow Springs team this year, or well, they weren't the only goals, but they were--
So where are your goals for me?
No, they were there.
That's your learning target.
Yes, they're the learning target.
Okay, so this is a unit that's on physics, and in 8th grade, what they've done with physics in all middle school is they took Newton's laws, and 6th grade now has the third law that they study in depth. 7th grade got first law, and 8th grade really has to focus on the second law, which is force equals mass times acceleration. And that's what's in that first learning target. And then, since 8th grade's the end of the middle school learning, the second learning target takes all of those laws and puts them together. And using the recurrent themes and concepts, they have to look at a system and explain where they can see Newton's laws in all those systems. So, we've always done a good job with this, and all those roller coasters and balloon cars that you saw in the middle school level, they work, but this, these Pasco things took it to the next level. And especially since our kids are so intelligent and so smart, they remember what they did back in 5th and 6th grade. So, this particular program, they were able to see Newton's second law with those carts. So, I don't know. So definitely, we were risk takers because when he brought in all those wonderful pieces of tools, I was like, "I'm gonna need some professional development to see how to use that and to learn it." And honestly, it was scary. I looked at it for a long time. But Cole was wonderful, and he came over and he taught us how to use it and taught us how to use it. Just so you know, there's a button on there and you push it and it's Bluetooth. So you ha-- I'm an old learner. Bluetooth, even my kids will do my Bluetooth for me, but I had to do my old Bluetooth on this. So you pair that with your computer, and there was a ramp, and that goes down a ramp, and it measures the force. So the kids actually have real science data, which took it to the next level, and that's what our students are ready for. And so the challenge was create a crash barrier to reduce the force. So they got the force to begin with, but then they had to make a design. With the ADI, there were some great videos for them to watch, real-life situations where automobiles were running into killers, and it took real events, so it makes it a real problem. So they really feel like they're doing a real thing. It's not like just a question in the textbook. So--
I can jump in.
You wanna jump in?
Yeah. I just want to say, just valuing risk-taking, her team, no questions. They were like, well, a little bit of timid, you know? This is new, this is gonna take some learning, but just valuing the, the ability to take it and get that job embedded PD and just run with it. I've got a lot of big ideas, and so Jenny was able to take those and figure out how they worked for her and her classroom and give the students a better ability to see those Newton's laws just in real time, whether it's from the collisions or if it was pulling or lots of other extensions beyond what you, you see here.
Go back to that other slide. I want to say when I saw this, I was like, "What? What is that?" But students in my classroom who are in the engineering class, they were, I was like, "So what do we do?" Because we thought, some of them thought, "We make a graph." And there's graph paper, they're gonna make a graph. But the kids in the engineering class were like, "No, that's how we plan out our design." So I learned from the students, and they also were able to teach the other students, and I learned that's what engineering stuff looks like. So I thought that was cool, the back-and-forth learning, both on the teacher part and the student part.
And, and in this stage, I'm sorry, can you go back one more time? In this stage in particular, they are designing their crash barrier, they're analyzing costs because they had to do a little bit of that as well, there, that was a criteria. And then they're also modeling, if you see on the bottom, the different stages of how their crash barrier worked. The, this is just a diagram of the experimental setup. Again, you have these cars and they're tethered to either Jenny's or a student's device, and that, that is running a program that takes real-time data from an accelerometer inside the car, fancy words, but as it crashes, it registers a force spike, and the students can analyze that spike, and their objective is to try and minimize that spike, what is it, 80%? Was it something like that? Yeah, 80%, significantly, so that they can try and keep the driver safe.
But the engagement in the classroom with just the going onto the screen and getting that, I thought was phenomenal. Because, you know, kids are like, "No, I don't wanna do that." Nobody said that with this project. They were eager coming into the classroom the next day, wanting to know, they were talking to their friends, walking in the door, saying, "What do you think we should do with this and that?" And I was like, "One day I had kids that wouldn't leave. They were doing their testing, and we're talking 4:10 in the afternoon." And usually, they're telling me, and, you know, I'm like, "What time is it?" You know? And, and I'm like, "Oh, we still need to learn." And these kids were like, "We didn't even know the bell was gonna ring." That's how engaged they were in this, and those are some things I was just amazed at.
It was so cool to see in real time. So, there's also, there's a couple of points that they looked at and reflected on their designs. That one right there, if you can go back just one more, Dr. Tinsley, I'm sorry. It has all the, oh, no, sorry, forward. There, that one. So this was the final design that the students came up with. They, they look at the problem they were trying to solve, they show their solution, which was in their drawing or the diagram, they model again before, during, and after, and this is after several iterations. I think you did two?
Two or three, depending on the class period, some had more time than others, but they, they would've kept on going--
Right.
--if, if they had the time--
Try again, try again.
--or the money to buy more materials. And everybody, it didn't matter if you were the highest learner or the lowest learner, girl or boy, everybody was involved, and everybody was trying to figure it out. So, as a teacher, it was risk-taker, I love the risk-taker, because I saw that and I was like, "Okay, I'm gonna have to use it." Cole got it for us. But there's a, we didn't talk about the Atwood machine, so there's another setup, so it's not just this one thing. Those things are versatile and they can show all of Newton's laws on the track. I was timid to do that. I now am an expert. But this, I was surprised the students were just so engaged, and we were, you know, they had the thing to fill out, but they were watching, they were, they came a little closer so they could see, but they all, they were, "Try this, try that, do this, do that." And they weren't off-task while we were doing that. So I was super impressed with the first part, it's called an Atwood machine.
And it's just the cart being tugged instead of just falling down?
And it can show Newton's laws, and it can, there's other things on it that could show the third law. So, I was just amazed at the engagement that our students had with it.
And it's, they're just well-rounded tools that do, do a really great job of showing real-time data for those students that just, they, they can ask those real questions.
And other teachers who were timid, who might've been a day or so behind me, said, "That was fun at the end." And that's a good thing. I mean, because you have to have your teachers to want to do it. So, it, learning takes time, both on the teacher part and the student part, but it was very successful.
All right. And the last little slide here is just, thank you first of all to the parents that have already been involved with us as we, we get these, these things rolling. But those who are wishing to continue their involvement or even in, like, enrich their involvement, please reach out. Got a number of options up here on the screen. Just Cole Hawkins, find me. I'm happy to help get you guys involved in our classrooms and doing all the fun STEM things with our kids. It's gonna be great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Agenda item 12 is our district--
Our board activity calendar has a programmatic review in the month of November, which supports the board's duty of oversight and our focus on our legacy of excellence. Tonight's update will be the Lovejoy Special Education Program. Dr. Tinsley?
Thank you. I wanna introduce Ms. Allison Clontz. Allison is our Director of Special Education and does a tremendous job about leading our department. And we're gonna show you several things tonight and really wanna celebrate the work and the achievements of our students and our teachers who support our I E P entitled students. So just to want to lift up, as I've shared with you in previous meetings, that we've had a instructional framework. We have an instructional framework for math, for science, for social studies. And we also have one, when we started working on this, Allison said, I think we need to have one for special education too. So what she and the team did is that they looked at, what is our vision for our special education students and what are our beliefs? So she's going to share with you, go into a little bit more depth, in-depth about our vision and our beliefs.
Thank you. Our special education vision is not just about access, it's about empowerment. We are tailoring learning to meet the student needs, and we are committed to inclusive practices. So our vision is to foster an exceptional, inclusive educational experience that empowers all students to be their best today, better tomorrow, and in the future. Our beliefs, we have some common beliefs for special education. We believe in inclusivity. Inclusion is not a strategy and it is not a place, it is a mindset, and we, we firmly believe that. We believe in collective responsibility, this is a collaboration of all stakeholders, and they are all our students. We believe in engagement. We want students not only engaged in academics and in school, but we want them engaged in community and out and, in, out and about. And we truly believe in a strengths-based approach. We believe that this is a focus on what students can do and not what they can't do. Our continuum of services, we have a range of services that meet the unique needs of all of our students. These services are determined by the A R D committee. We start with a student's present levels, we move to the goals that we're putting in place. And then, it's really a balance. We want just the right amount of services for a student to achieve those goals set forth within their I E P. So starting with, the continuum begins with independent. Our students remain in the general education classroom. This is their least restrictive environment, they are with general education peers. We are monitoring accommodations, we are collaborating with teachers to help students build that independence and those self-advocacy skills. In-class support includes both inclusion and co-teach models. Our special education staff work directly with the general education teachers, providing targeted assistance. In the co-teach setting, general education teachers and special education teachers are collaborating together, they're planning together, they're instructing and co-teaching together. And share that responsibility to ensure students benefit both from specialized strategies as well as grade-level content. Our specialized support classrooms for students who require more intensive instruction may include direct instruction, you might hear this called resource. It can be a pull-out of small group or an individualized setting, as well as our self-contained classrooms for students with more significant needs. These environments are highly structured, they're tailored to build academic, social, and life skills, preparing students for long, long-term success. Oh, I added pictures, I'm so sorry, and I got them in too late. I had pictures of our L C D C. But we serve in Lovejoy I S D, we serve individualized support for students from ages three all the way to twenty-one. Our youngest learners are taught right over here at L C D C by triple-certified teachers. These teachers are certified in general education, special education, as well as E S L. And our, our students learn in integrated classrooms. Our eighteen-plus Transition Academy, we've done some presentations on them, they've got some really amazing things going on. They're also housed here in this building. They are students that, that have met that academic requirement, but they are working toward goals of independent living skills and employability skills. We are currently partnering with Turows, A C O, and we also have students that are training and receiving job coaching in some positions within Lovejoy I S D. We've got students in the cafeteria, and we also have students in the field house. Our department goals this year, we, after some reflection of previous years and maybe some gaps we've seen, as a department, we came together really to, to determine what we wanted to work on and what we knew our students need, needed. We started with case management. As a case manager, you're collaborating with all stakeholders to align instruction, accommodations, grades, and also to track progress of students, while also keeping those instructional practices at the forefront. So we had the opportunity this summer, and we've actually done this for the last three years, but we've had the opportunity to bring teachers in during the summer, pay them for two days to provide professional development. That way we can really target it specific to special education. We never wanna take away from the general education and content area that they receive in learning in Lovejoy, so we have the opportunity to bring them in early. We trained on co-teach this summer, inclusion, resource, and those alt-curriculum settings. We also set some expectations around aligning those curriculum documents with the general education curriculum documents. And also that our, our special education teachers are collaboratively planning with our general education teachers so that that collective responsibility is in place. Scheduling sometimes is a challenge, but we have some amazing principles that made that scheduling happen, and, and, and that is, is going well this year. We have four hundred twenty-two absolutely amazing I E P entitled students here in Lovejoy. They are served by three member, staff members at the administration building. That's myself, and I have two amazing coordinators that work really closely with me. They are kinda split within the district, I've got one that really works closely with elementary and then one that works with the secondary levels. I have fifteen assessment and related staff members. This includes our diagnosticians, our school psychologists, our behavior team, assistive technology, occupational therapy, all of those wonderful ladies that, that do some amazing work. We have thirty-eight case managers. These case managers are our special education teachers, as well as our speech and language pathologists. Those S L Ps are also case managers for students that receive speech-only services. And then we have thirty-four hard-working instructional aides or paraprofessionals within the district. So Texas has thirteen eligibility categories. We service just about all of these eligibility categories. I would say about a quarter of Lovejoy I S D students served have a specific learning disability, and this does include dyslexia. In twenty twenty-three, there were some changes in the Texas Dyslexia Handbook, which shifted those dyslexia services to special education under that umbrella and I D E A. So we do service all students, and you'll see in the next slide, we've got some, some differences or some raises in our numbers.
So as Allison mentioned, the enrollment here, you'll see about a two percent increase of enrollment from twenty-one to, twenty-two to twenty-five, twenty-six. And as Allison mentioned, because of the changes with eligibility with dyslexia, we feel like that has had an impact on our numbers here, it's, it's one factor. But we wanted to, to show you the, the, the growth of the, the numbers that we are serving here in Lovejoy.
All right, so when an, an initial evaluation is completed on a student, we come to an A R D meeting, we have to answer two questions. We have to answer yes to two different questions for a student to be eligible for special education. We answer yes to, is there a disability? And then we also answer yes to, is there a need for specially-designed instruction? If we don't answer yes to the second question, then oftentimes those students would be served under five oh four or recommended for service under five oh four. But if we say yes to both of those questions, then students are eligible for special education services. After that initial evaluation, we reevaluate by law every three years. And so you can see our numbers, we, we have a mistake on that twenty-two, twenty-three, it's significantly lower. That actually, we did some recalculation today, and that number was two thirty-five. So you can kinda see how it jumped. So in twenty twenty-one, it was two seventy-seven, in twenty-four, twenty-five, we did two hundred and seventy-three. That includes initial evaluations, and then those numbers include initial evaluations as well as reevaluations, and possibly some additional evaluations that come up. We start seeing some difference, or some needs in a student that we haven't evaluated in, and then we would evaluate and, and determine the need for any services.
And just wanna lift up the support from the, the Board of Trustees and also working with the, the H R department. One of the areas that we saw is that we really wanted, it was teacher retention in the area of special education teachers. So we put in place a couple of years ago that we are paying teachers who are teaching special education as an additional stipend. We also, as Allison mentioned, ensuring that we offer opportunities for more specialized professional development, because they really need both. They need what the general education teachers are receiving, plus they need it specialized. And then the, Allison and her team have done a phenomenal job at having regular case management meetings with our case managers and our principals, because of just the complexity of the work that they do. So we feel like that that additional layer of support is helping with our retention of our special education staff.
And we, we're so proud of what we've done. We really made some changes to piggyback on what Dr. Tinsley shared. We made some changes this year and took all of our meetings onto campuses rather than asking people to come over here after school. We have been really thoughtful around when we schedule those, so that we take them onto campuses and, and our teachers are engaged and, and involved in those on their campus rather than having to go somewhere else. We are so thankful for our parent partnership here in Lovejoy, but parent engagement continues to be a goal for us. We, this year in October, we had a Transition Academy open house. We've got some students that potentially will transition over here, and we'll have a much bigger group of eighteen-plus students. So we had an open house for students and, and parents both to learn a little bit more about that program. In the spring, we are planning a Transition one oh one in the state of Texas. At the age of fourteen, transition is started to, or we began talking about transition within the A R D, so that we can really talk about goals and what post-secondary will look like when Lovejoy I S D steps out of the picture. We host Sage coffees, we've got newsletters that go out, and then we are always looking for feedback opportunities.
And Allison's gonna speak specifically to what we are doing, but I wanted to lift up our recent star performance for our, our students who are I E P entitled. We, we, we still know we have work to do, and some of what Allison talked about is some of the work with the, the co-teach and the collaboration. We do feel like that that's very pivotal on, in, having these students serve, because we still have to keep them, we have to make sure that we're reaching that goal with the general education curriculum. So Allison, you wanna talk a little bit about some strategies that, that the coordinators are doing and what they're working with on campuses?
Absolutely. So we brought Region Ten in over the summer to do some co-teach training. Co-teach, like I talked about already, is an amazing model where you have a general education teacher and a special education teacher teaching together, which really, that benefits all students in that classroom. But we did some really specialized training on co-teach, put those expectations in place that, that, that collaborative planning will happen with both of those teachers. And then we are digging into data, kinda like we not, have not done before, to be really honest and transparent. And, and we're grouping students and, and doing all of the things that they do on the general education side, really specific to the special education side. We are using, utilizing benchmark data. We, we utilized, or, excuse me, we wrote benchmarks for our alt-curriculum students this year. This was the first time that they have had benchmarks, and we put those in place so we could kinda get a baseline for where that would land. We're utilizing and digging into our MAP scores. We're also doing a lot of, of work with our case managers to ensure that we're writing standard-based goals. Because everything is based around the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, and that's what our expectation is from the state. So any goals that we're putting in place for students, we want to ensure that they are standards-based, so that we can work on prerequisite skills and then close those gaps for our students.
And then this next slide just real, provides you information about what our annual budget is for special education services here in Lovejoy, what we receive from the state, and then also with our I D B, I D E A B grant. So there are still expenses that the district has to cover with, with our local funds.
And our last slide, but certainly not least, are some student enrichment opportunities. We have the opportunity every year to participate in Special Olympics and Unstoppable Athletics. We've got bocce ball, or our students will participate in bocce ball or have participated in bocce ball. We went to that a few weeks ago. We will be participating in track as well as basketball, and then I actually just signed up for a cornhole tournament with the high school. So we, that is a unified sport where they will have a pow and one of our students, and they will play some cornhole together. So that's always a really exciting and, and fun time for, for our kiddos. Thank you so much for allowing me to talk very quickly about our amazing special education program.
On the retention slide, we have that eleven-student caseload. Is that pretty standard across what we've done in the past, or is that higher or lower?
It's actually a significant decrease. Allison, prior to making those adjustments and adding additional staff, what, what were you averaging?
We were probably more, more twenty and up. And, and that is just an average, that's taking all of our case managers, including our S L Ps, and then dividing that number out, obviously, what an average is. But, so we've got some campuses that are higher, we've got some campuses, but that typically is about an, an average. And, and we, we try really hard to keep that number low.
I'll ask one more. We have our budget priority discussion later in the meeting. I guess, is there anything else that we should be aware of as a board in terms of emerging needs? Or I know we have newspad funding coming in, but something that we need to know as we frame that conversation later for this space?
I don't think so. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Agenda item number thirteen is a presentation on our twenty twenty-five Fine Arts Festival. Dr. Zambesi?
Thank you, I'm excited to get to present on the Lovejoy I S D Fine Arts Festival. Just a reminder, we're, we're so excited to see the, just the talent exemplified by our, our fine arts students and programs. And they've been working hard in preparation for this, and so we're a little less than, you know, a month out. And so we just wanted to ensure that everyone had the, the dates. And so Color Guard and Dance will perform their showcase on December tenth at six thirty. Our Lovejoy Visual Arts K through twelve Evolution Gallery will have its opening night on December fourth and continue each night of our Fine Arts Festival window. Theater will be doing their Willow Springs and L H S Theater Showcase on December twelfth at seven. Our choirs will have a vertical performance on December eighth. Hart and Puster will lead that off, followed by Sloan Creek, and then the middle school and high school will partner together at seven. Orchestra, December ninth concerts, you see again that vertical alignment, so we get to see our, our sixth-grade students all the way up to our seniors. And so Sloan Creek, Willow, and L H S will be performing on the night. And then lastly, right there, Band, their vertical concerts on December eleventh. So we hope to see you out at these events, and you'll be seeing more advertisements to the community, but a really special event, and wanted to ensure we highlighted that for you tonight.
Thank you. The New York Fine Arts Festival is always a fantastic time, we hope our, our community comes out for that.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, agenda item number fourteen is a presentation on the Fujitsu Safety and Security Project. This agenda item supports our board priority number one, which states that the Lovejoy I S D Board of Trustees will support a safe and secure environment for all students and staff. Mr. Percival?
So as we continue to advance our commitment to district-wide safety, we're very excited to provide an update for our first-of-its-kind public-private partnership dedicated to enhancing safety technology across our school, our schools and our school. safety technology across our schools and our school district. This innovative collaboration brings cutting-edge tools and expertise to our district, strengthening commitment to our commitment to creating secure, supportive learning environments for every student and staff member. And so last spring was the last update that we provided on this partnership with Fujitsu. And what I'd like to do at this time is I'd like to introduce Nicholas Lee. Nicholas is Executive Director and CEO of Fujitsu Intelligence. Mr. Lee is also a member of the community and a proud Lovejoy dad. Mr. Lee will be providing a project status update and next steps with kind of where we're at and where we're headed with the project. So without further ado, Mr. Lee.
All right. Thank you, Kyle. Yeah, thanks for having me here as well. Just a little bit about myself, I've been at Fujitsu roughly around twenty years, so I do serve there as an executive director. Also started our AI Center of Excellence back in two thousand and eighteen. And, you know, we have access to some of the most amazing technology. We have the world's fastest supercomputer, quantum computers. We've done over seven thousand projects when it comes to data and AI. We've also serviced over a hundred and fifty Fortune 500 companies since we established that Center of Excellence. And so this project actually came about, we have some technology that's used at the Olympics for judging gymnastics and it looks at human skeletal movement. And it's such a high degree of confidence that, just like in football when you throw a red flag, it's used from a judging standpoint to validate the accuracy of the judges. And in 2022, I was in Liverpool during the session and we were looking at how can we make our schools safer? And so my son was just in kindergarten at that time and I think we just had the horrible events that happened in Allen as well. And so I felt like there's got to be a way that I could help, you know, take this technology and put it into a school setting. And, you know, a lot of the technology in schools, especially when it comes to students, you need things like privacy by design. You need to think ground up, like how are we going to create solutions that service the students with things like on-premise solutions and not using cloud? And so this technology essentially uses the human skeletal movement. It came originally from three-D-based, you know, analysis of human movement. We've brought it down to two-D analysis, so lowered the cost barrier for that. And we've deployed at Lovejoy now. And so what the idea is to identify things like loitering, you know, looking through windows, jumping fences. So just like if we can make the outside of our buildings safer, creating a digital barrier, we have our physical, you know, barriers, but if we can add a digital barrier, you know, the idea was like, how can we make our schools a little bit safer? And so through this partnership, we've been able to deploy this technology at Hart and at the high school. And if we go to the next slide, I can just kind of show you what it looks like. We've now been operational for over a year. We've been able to actually identify and detect unauthorized access to a few of the buildings. We only have four cameras set up at this point, but we've just launched a new version that allows us to scale much more cameras. And so the idea is to get it to around twenty cameras per facility and do multi-behavior detection. So we can do, again, piggybacking or tailgating, looking through windows, kicking, punching doors. And so I think we identified twenty-six total behaviors through working with the school resource officers and, you know, like right now, we're five into it. And you'll see, we also built the analytics dashboard on the backend. No cost for any of this, we've built the analytics dashboard so that school resource officers can understand like patterns and detection. We've built a mobile app that only works on Lovejoy-issued devices but has pop-ups that way that when an issue happens, someone's trying to piggyback on door four, the school resource officers know exactly what's happening. They can go to that situation and intervene. And then we've also built in role-based access to make sure it has the proper security. And so going forward, our goal is to really expand the behaviors, expand training with the school resource officers, and then build out a roadmap that we can take forward. And based on this learning that we've had here, we've now deployed it at Wynn Casino in Las Vegas and we've also deployed it at Southside Medical Center in Georgia. So we are looking to use this kind of as an innovation lab where we can learn and deploy technology going forward. So thank you very much.
And I would like to mention too, Mr. Lee and his team have spent many a day, all day, lots of hours, lots of resources they've deployed here in the school district to really develop the solution the way that we, you know, collectively envisioned. And so when he talks about the push notifications and he talks about the school marshals receiving those real-time, that really does give us that added layer of resources for the exterior of our building so that we know what's approaching. We know if we've got someone trying to enter the building, not just during the school day, but even after hours. So it's real-time, it does pop up on the phone. I know that our marshals have been an integral part of this process. And so one of the things that Mr. Lee mentioned is kind of redeploying a new system so that we're trying to locate less false positives essentially, so that when you do get that alert, the confidence level is high that it's detected one of the predefined movements that we're looking for.
Will the marshals get the, I guess, get the video of it so they know what to go look for?
It does. It absolutely does with a timestamp so that they can go straight to the clip and not have to, you know, go through hours of footage trying to identify what's going on. Yes, sir. I know that we are absolutely grateful for the partnership to be in partnership with you with everything that you've done and poured into it and continue to. We believe it makes us, we feel confident it makes us safer and we are indebted and we're thankful.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, anything I can do to make the students safer, especially with my kids here, is a huge plus. So I appreciate the opportunity to collaborate with Lovejoy as well. It's been a great partnership.
I'm just going to add my comment to that. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time and your commitment, for Fujitsu's time and commitment, not just for Lovejoy, but for a product that could benefit public school students everywhere. Every person on this board is a parent in this district as well and safety and security is our number-one priority as a board. And so we're thankful so much for our marshal program. We're thankful for the additional training and equipment that we've invested in over the years, the additional physical supports around the business, around the building, our drone partnership with the City of Lucas, our personal security devices that were put into place this year with all of that technology and adding this, like you said, this external digital barrier definitely gives us some additional protection for our students and staff and peace of mind as well.
Great, thank you.
I did want to make sure I extend my gratitude to Mr. Lee. He's been a phenomenal partner and multiple times he has brought really the entire design and implementation team here on premises in Lovejoy ISD to collaborate with our leadership and our school marshals. And so it's been an incredible partnership and I do want to just underline that this has been at no cost to Lovejoy ISD. So to have a partner that is willing to invest in our district and in public schools and the safety of our students in this way is really remarkable and we are deeply grateful. Also so appreciative of the mindfulness of the safety and security requirements we have in terms of student privacy, but then also a sensitivity to our fiscal reality in terms of funding and the fact that you all have been so deliberate to design something that works with existing cameras and existing technology infrastructure.
Thank you. Thanks, Katie.
That's very cool. Thomas, you have a lot to live up to when we get to budget. That's very cool. All right. Agenda item number fifteen is a discussion and possible action on a resolution to cast a ballot for the Collin-Cad Board of Directors. So just a little background on this one is the Collin County Appraisal District, also known as Collin-Cad, plays a major role in determining the property values that ultimately shape the tax bills that our Lovejoy residents receive. I know I recognize that particular bill when it comes in the mail. Collin-Cad is governed by a Board of Directors and all taxing entities, of which Lovejoy ISD is one of those entities, have the ability to cast votes for the Collin-Cad Board of Directors. And then the nominees who receive the largest number of votes across all taxing entities will serve a four-year term. Participating in this election ensures that Lovejoy ISD has a voice and a contact at the county level. Tonight, we will review our options across the people that were nominated for a board seat and determine how to allocate our votes. Lovejoy ISD has been allotted twenty-five votes. We can cast all twenty-five votes for a particular candidate or we can allocate our votes for up to five candidates. And looking at the correspondence we received from Collin-Cad, there are eleven nominees and I'd like to open the floor for discussion regarding allocation of our votes. One thing we might talk about first is if we feel strongly about allocating our votes to all in one person or if we'd like to split them.
We have twenty-five votes and, you know, in order to give those votes the most weight, I say we try to allocate as much as we can to the candidates we think that will represent Lovejoy as best as possible.
I'm in agreement with that particular thought process. I think it makes more sense for us to utilize our votes in the way that would represent Lovejoy probably the most likely to receive a board seat. Everyone's very talkative tonight. All right, so we have, I think, general consensus because there's no opposition to cast all twenty-five votes into one particular candidate. Do we have a nomination?
I would nominate Brian Dale.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Open motion in a second. Is there any additional conversation? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Lovejoy ISD will cast twenty-five votes for Brian Dale. Agenda item number sixteen is consider an act on an order authorizing the issuance of refunding of bonds, establishing the parameters for the refunding and delegating authority to the administration to complete the refunding. Trustees, if you will recall, we discussed the opportunity for bond refunding at our October board meeting, including how this could potentially lower the amount of interest that we would owe in service of our bond debt. Tonight's agenda item is to continue that discussion and then have the board vote on next actions. This supports our district priority number four, which is that we will strategically plan for the financial sustainability for our district. Mr. Wilman.
Good evening. Tonight, we do have Mr. Witt from SAMCO here with us to review the presentation and then answer any questions that you may have before moving on to the consideration. So, Mr. Witt.
Okay, good evening. It's good to be back with you. Some of those in the audience or at home would know that in August of this year, we issued some of the new bonds that were approved by voters for the new projects in accordance with state law and state timing. We have some authorized but unissued bonds for this long-term program of facility improvement, capital improvement, et cetera. What we have before you tonight is a refinancing opportunity and that law is dictated by the federal government, so hence the reason that we're here on a different date within six months apart. One is by state law timing and the other is by refunding timing, as we call it. So on the screen there, you can see that we have some bonds outstanding and the ones that we've highlighted in yellow there are the five percent coupons. These are the bonds that would produce the most amount of interest cost savings if we refinance them at lower interest rates. And really, the block of bonds at the bottom there, the two thousand and sixteen refunding bonds that's outstanding at thirty-three-point-three million is really the driving factor to this refunding. The others kind of add to and kind of ride the coattails of the two thousand and sixteen refunding. And you can see there that there's several maturities at five percent and then the far-right column bottom, we cannot refinance those on a tax-exempt basis except within ninety days of February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-six, and that's the call date that's coming upon us and hence the reason, the timing that we're here tonight. We've actually done much of the pre-work, getting ready for disclosures that are required in the securities market to be able to enter the market. We anticipate potentially doing that the first week of December, right after Thanksgiving. So there are a few three percents, a few three-and-a-half percents and a few four percents. What we will do on the day of pricing is surgically remove any bond that adds savings of a certain amount, right? We know the five percents are going to generate this savings, but we could tack on some of those in addition to, based on current market conditions versus the outstanding rate. So for example, you can have a short bond that has a three percent coupon that might produce savings where you might have a longer maturity that's at a four percent coupon that doesn't provide any savings because we have a traditional upward-sloping yield curve, which is what we're working with today. So on the next slide, those are the current market yields. I say upward-sloping yield curve except for the very first part of the graph. Our two thousand and twenty-six is at like a two-seventy-one, dips down to two-sixty-four and then that starts our traditional upward-sloping yield curve. Going out to two thousand and forty-one, on the far-right column, we get to three-point-six-six percent. Just to be clear, there's a coupon rate and then there's a yield. It's the yields that will drive the refunding savings. It's the coupon rate that, being at five percent, that we can lower with these yields. So when you start getting beyond two thousand and forty-one, you really do need five percent coupons to start producing the savings. So on the next page, although everything is preliminary and it will be a game-day decision, we're pretty confident that by extracting the five percent coupons from each of those series of bonds, which is reflected on this page, at the bottom, we should produce about two million dollars of interest cost savings. Now, this is not earth-shattering for this district. We have a lot of bonds to issue. This is basic blocking and tackling. This is being good stewards of the taxpayers' money, but it's not going to overwhelmingly change. We are squeezing the juice out of these bonds as best we can. For example, the two thousand and sixteen was a refunding itself and now we're refunding it again. So two million dollars is a lot of money, I get that, but it's not, in this context, going to change the dynamics of what we're doing with our bond model. But it is something that you should undertake and perform for the benefit of the taxpayers of the district.
Is the two million, is that net of fees?
Pardon me?
Is the two million dollar savings, is that net of fees?
It is. It is. And I would like to be optimistic that that's a conservative number, too. I think if I ran the numbers exactly today with these bonds, it would probably be closer to two-point-four million. But both of those are net of the fees. There are no out-of-pocket costs. They're built into those bond numbers. Okay, so the next page, this graph was not in the report that Thomas gave last time, but really this just shows our structure of all of our bonds before refunding. So all we're doing is taking some of these out, putting them right back in at a lower interest rate, and we're going to clip off the top, about a hundred and eighty-five thousand, you know, in the short-to-medium-term range there. So we're just clipping down the top here, but you can see that I'm not restructuring any of the bonds. This is not something that's being done to accommodate the new bonds. It's not something being done because our bond model is not performing. It's performing exactly as we want it to. When you see the big bar on the left, that is the current fiscal year that we're in in twenty-five, twenty-six. We purposefully structured that bond to essentially balance the budget in the INS account for twenty-five, twenty-six. You can see a big drop-off. What that means to this district is we have built-in bond capacity to take on the new projects as we can. The other thing to note about this is the big orange bar in the far-left is, shows that the amortization of these bonds is very rapid. So again, because we have a multitude of types of projects that we're financing out of voted bonds, whether it goes from short-term technology or to longer-term facility improvements, we have to have amortization that's consistent with what we're financing, even though it's one series of bonds. So to make a long story short, here, next year, we've got a drop in debt service pending any issuance of new bonds. We don't have any need to restructure bonds and so really our structuring capability will come with the new bonds as we issue those. We also have in your audit, which may not be finalized due to the federal government shutdown and so forth, but most of it is complete. You have nine million, nine or so in INS fund balance. That's on a June thirty basis. Actually, in our voted bond debt service account, the INS account, our cash flow basis is on the traditional eight-thirty-one fiscal year-end. That's the state's fiscal year-end. It's what all school districts were, you know, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. So the June thirty INS fund balance is elevated. We have to make about two million dollars of payments August fifteenth. We make our payments in February and August in Texas public schools. So the real number there is seven million and change in INS fund balance and that is a very, very healthy number. If you take it and do it as a percentage of the bar on the left, which is about twenty-three million, that's about thirty percent of your budget in the INS fund. That is more than- of your budget in the INS fund. That is more than enough. We're not planning on using any of that excess INS fund balance for this refunding. This is a refunding purely for savings. It's not a pay-down of bonds. And the reason we're choosing to do that is, again, as we structure new bonds with certain amortizations we want to have, i.e., accelerated amortization, that fund balance can help us in that regard. So, you have very healthy INS fund balance. There is a game plan for it. This particular component of your financial plan and your debt management plan does not require the use of that INS fund balance, although it's very healthy, and we will have some plans over time to deploy that on a very conservative basis. And we'll retain what we need as our budget stops from being at the lower orange bars up to that higher orange bar, which is where we're going to land. So, your INS fund balance will be an appropriate percentage of your debt service as that debt service is issued of the bonds that were approved by the voters. And then the next one is the preliminary scheduled events. Again, we began the process of the disclosures, the permanent school fund guarantee, the discussion with rating agencies. Everything is going in place. Today, we're asking for your authorization and delegation to the administration to complete the refunding. And so, right now, we're in a position to move very, very quickly. Early December is what we have there. There are many other school districts in Texas that have the same timeframe, so we'll be navigating who's in the market, who's not in the market, over about a two-week period. And then, we'll probably close this if we price in early December by the end of the year. We can. There's no closing date restriction here. We could close in January if we decide to price in mid-December. And again, the redemption date of these bonds is February 15, 2026, hence the reason we're here talking about refinancing those bonds. So, with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have. This is taking higher coupon bonds out, putting back in lower coupon bonds, saving over $2 million for the taxpayers with no change to the debt service structure.
So, the bar chart on the, that was my question, the debt service structure. So, we're not changing any of the maturity schedules. We're lining them up. If it's a five-year bond left, it's a five-year that's going to replace it. So, the curve here on this bar chart would remain the same, just be lowered because of the interest savings?
Exactly. That's exactly right. And it will go out, it doesn't go all the way out to the right. It stops in the middle, because those are the bonds that we have access to. Literally, we're clipping off the top of each bar by a small amount, and then if you aggregate that up, it adds up to over $2 million. That's exactly right. We put our structure in place with the orange bar of the bonds that we just issued.
Right.
And again, to reiterate for audience members or people that ask you questions, the technology component is amortized extremely quickly here. I mean, we're paying it off in one year, even though it's two, three, four-year technology. And you can use the same analogy for medium-term assets, you know, whether it's a roof or an HVAC system or, I think we're doing auditorium repairs. Those are being amortized well in advance of the useful life of that improvement that you're doing. And that's something that we're going to keep an eye on, not only with the first installment, but each installment as we go forward. And we need certain values of our tax base to reach benchmarks as we issue new bonds. But you can see here that with the first installment, which was probably a little quicker than you wanted to move, because you're still identifying what's the priorities and how we're going to do it. But from a finance standpoint, we needed to have the payment in this summer for purposes of the state law and what's called "hold harmless," which every time they raise our homestead exemption, they create a state aid category, but that state aid category has timelines, and so, we had to meet that timeline. And we went through that this summer in detail.
That 90-day window around February, is that, has to be done before then, 90 days prior, or it could be 90 days after?
It could. And it's 90 days prior is the first opportunity, but we could refinance these bonds two years from now if that produced a better situation for us. Almost always, when we get to this, we start looking at the call date that's coming up, and we start measuring the level of savings. And in our business, we do a percentage of savings. So, if I'm refunding $100 million worth of bonds and I'm getting $2 million of savings, that's very, very small. So, it may not be advantageous to do that and take those savings. If I'm refunding $20 million worth of bonds and getting $2 million savings, that's very, very large. And so, for lack of a better term, the bang for the buck is something that we're analyzing here, and our recommendation is to pick all of those bonds that are callable February 26 and prior that have the 5% coupon. If I tried to refund the 2000, with the bonds without the 2026 call date, because it's so small, each of those are very, very small, it doesn't make any sense, hence the reason they haven't been done. But to your question, it's the earliest we can do it, but there are no restrictions on how late we can do it. We can go past that call date and still perform refundings.
Any additional questions? Before we make a motion, I'd like to call your attention to the motion language that is in your packet. In your board book.
I move to approve the order authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax bonds, establishing sale parameters, authorizing the execution of a bond purchase agreement and an escrow agreement, approving an official statement, and enacting other provisions related to the subject.
Second.
Yes, welcome to my world.
Motion in a second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number 17 is a presentation on our student information system. Ms. Koenig.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to move right here. And yes, we're going to be talking about our student information system, and just like with anything, we want to make sure, whatever we recommend or that we're considering, that it is part of our district and board priorities and follows and aligned with those. First, I just want to explain a little bit about what is the Public Information Management System, or PIMS. You probably have heard us about this. It's our reporting system. It's basically a comprehensive data collection system used by Texas Education Agency, TEA, to gather a wide range of information on public education in Texas. The data, of course, that we have to report in PIMS is our student information, demographics, attendance, course completion, graduate, graduation rates, teacher and staff information, certifications, financial data, program participation, school and district characteristics. All of those things make up PIMS, okay? But we have to have a system to put all that information in. So, that's where we're kind of moving to. So, our student information system, or our SIS system, is a software system that our school, the school districts use to store, track, and manage student-related data and streamline administrative tasks. All of this is sent through the Texas Student Data System, TSDS. And as you recall, you might have heard me speak earlier of this past year, that we have a new system called EdFi Technology that the state has rolled out. We do have submissions throughout the year, but there are really four days of submission. Last Friday in October is our, we call Snapshot Day, every single year from, I don't know how long. So, that's fall, mid-year, summer, and extended year. So, that's basically when we have submission data that has to be reported through our SIS system. So, what we're doing is we're considering a new system here. We looked, we currently use Power School, as most of you, as parents, are aware of and have used, but we wanted to look at another system. And so, we sat down, and we talked about what are our goals and objectives of an SIS system? What do we need? And so, as we were reviewing our goals and objectives of a new SIS system, we were focused on strengthening reporting capabilities, improving overall usage. We really need reliable, robust software solutions, supported by knowledgeable team. We also need someone that understands Texas state reporting, because it's a little bit different, and the requirements there. We need to make sure our information's accurate, and that we have timely compliance, because when they're due, they're due. And we definitely don't want to ask for extensions there. So, I think another priority that we were looking for was the experience for our staff and for our parents and for our students. And we need something that was going to be intuitive and have an intuitive interface. We also were looking at FERPA compliance, data security, and if there was a system that we could unify some of our other software systems into one system to make it more user-friendly and meet our needs there. So, those were some of our goals and objectives. And so, that led us to what our process was. And so, our process was, first, we need to identify what our district needs. So, that's where we started. So, last spring, we've been talking about this for probably 18 months or so, but as you know, we've had some other technology rollouts, Lovejoy app, all these other types of things. So, we started there. So, last spring, we met as district leadership. We had staff from all of our, some other staff from the district assess and document what our district's needs were. So, we gathered information, and we created a list of requirements of what, kind of what we needed there. And from there, we also looked and reached out to, got a list of vendors that were approved that could, you report in the EdFi system, TSDS. And so, we did some research on those vendors from there. And then, we asked them to come out and give us product demonstrations and presentations. From that, we used a rubric, and we scored different products. And as we, because remember, we also have to think of all the end-users. Not only are we talking about parents, students, we're also talking about our PIMS people. We're talking about reporting absences. We're talking about grades, report cards, all of those types of documentation and things that we report there. And we also needed a really good fit for our district, you know, like what is a good fit for us here in Lovejoy? So, we evaluated, we scored that, those products, and then we started looking at other, what vendors, what they were offering, and the value for what it was going to cost. Something else we did is we reached out to districts around us that have already done research. And so, we found that there were quite a few districts around us. I think there are 330 districts in the state of Texas that you currently use Skyward. Some of you may have been, may be familiar with it. You might have used it in another district. I know some of our staff has used it in other districts. There were several, you know, near us, Allen Plano, Wiley, all of these districts use it. The ones that have an asterisk have already migrated to the advanced version of Skyward Q. So, that would be the version we would be using, which is more of a cloud-based version, okay? We found this as an advantage, because they were able, we had lots of resources to tell us information about, you know, what went well, what questions to ask, support. We made lots of connections there. But there's, that also helps us, because there's a lot of support out there and a lot of support groups. And Region 10 and PIMS are able to support our needs, too, if we have any. So, we reached out to them, and we, because we needed some, you know, credible users to give us those recommendations, as we looked at Skyward. And from there, we kind of said, okay, if we choose them, why would we choose them? What, you know, what are we looking for? And so, why would we choose them? And one of the main reasons we would choose them is for data security, because we needed a secure, cloud-based infrastructure for data security. We wanted, of course, to comply with FERPA, ensures student and staff data privacy in accordance with federal regulations was also very, very important. We need it fully compatible with Texas data standards and EdFi reporting requirements, because that's new, so we needed that function. We also wanted local support, so Texas-based support teams that were knowledgeable and that could assist us there. We looked at also how user-friendly it was, intuitive interface design that everyone could easily manipulate and use. And then, we looked at what are some other possibly platforms, other software platforms that we can consolidate, so we're not using as many. So, that was another reason that we were looking at that. And of course, just vendor credibility confirmation was something else was why we would want to choose them. So, as we kind of went through this process, we also asked about what that implementation timeline would look for, look at. And so, as we looked at that timeline, if this was considered, you know, and approved, we would start project planning in January. And so, we'd kick off. We'd establish those communications, procedures, all of those types of things, and more of an implementation schedule, and that would be from January to March. From there, we would do system installation, looking at software database installation. We need to do technical staff training, test the environment, all those types of things there. And then, of course, look at consultation and configuration and migration from Power School into Skyward, and that would be between February and April. And then, of course, the end of the school year, March to May, would be migration of live data and historical data. And of course, verifying that, because remember, this is basically the system of how we get paid and how we get funded, so we want to make sure all that information is correct. And then, we would also, and then, from June to October, customized training with district level and end-user. Our parents would still register in Power School this fall, because everything would be migrated, so that's not going to be a change for them. But we would be rolling out some changes and upgrades as we integrate it into this new system. There are also lots of staff resources and help. And so, we went and we looked at this. There's self-paced training. There's videos, simulations, all of those types of things that would be helpful for the staff that they could access. And we looked at parent resources and help there. We would also open, have open times that parents could come in. We would look at, you know, grades starting in the fall of 2026. We'd do virtual office hours in person. We'd have Zoom timing hours that we could work with, work with our parents, too. But, and for this to be completed there. And then, from there, of course, this would all be funded. The source of funding is through our Prop B of the voter-approved bonds in May of 2025, and the estimated cost would not exceed $350,000 there. So, that's kind of what our process, some of our next steps would be y'all's consideration of approval. Then we do, of course, implementation and training from there. On this new SIS system. Questions?
So, when would you anticipate Power School completely going away if we moved forward with this? You said we'd still be using that.
And we would still.
Would be overlapped for a while?
Yes, it would, because we would want to test the environment.
And so, would that be?
So, we're probably.
Fall of '27 is when that?
No, no, no. No, no, no. You would probably, you would get report carding, and your report cards would, it would be completely converted by the fall of 2026. You would register in Power School, but then we would migrate to Skyward.
What are some of the systems that we don't need to have outside of the student information system currently that this system will allow us to do?
We were, well, for example, we were looking at some of the nutrition systems. What else? Counseling, nursing, all those things that we document in. Dr. Laura Little is over here, too. She's over at PIMS and District Data Support. So, yeah, there are three or four different ones. I don't want to jump to that, because I don't want people to think that that change is automatically happening, but yes, we can migrate to all of those.
Well, there's just some opportunity to.
Opportunities.
Simplify, get things in a standardized system, so people are more comfortable.
Correct.
Using, even if it's a new environment for them, it's something they're used to using, because they're putting grades in the other system.
Right, right, definitely.
Is that $350,000 just for the initial implementation, or is there ongoing costs? I'm trying to understand what would come out of bond versus MNO as we continue to support it.
Yeah, no, great question. It's all, it's, the $350,000 includes the, is the acquisition of the software and the services for a term of five years. So, it'd cover all of that for over five years.
And how does that compare to our current costs on Power School?
So, on Power School, since we're with, Skyward, we're acquiring it and acquiring their service for the five years, we will have, we won't have, there will be no ongoing cost for that five-year term. As it relates, right now, in Power School, I believe it's an annual cost of roughly $75,000.
And that's coming out of MNO, so it'd be an MNO benefit for this, right?
That is correct, yes.
And they're, they have professional services that are going to help us do this migration, because this is a.
Yes.
I see this as a very heavy lift.
Yes, it is. And yes, they do. In fact, we, Ben Alstine, just went through this, and they did it in three months this past spring and summer. Yeah, they will. They'll have a lot of support there.
What happens after the five years? Are we able to pay for it out of the INS, or does it go to the MNO after that?
Those are conversations that we would explore and see how we would move forward with it. If we, at the end of its useful life of the five years, if we decide that we want to reacquire for another five years, we would engage those conversations with Skyward. Or we would look at, if they did not meet the needs in that five years, then explore other opportunities.
So, that being said, it would potentially stay in the
So that being said, it would potentially stay in the INS bucket? When we re-up in five years and do this again, it'd be the same type of tran- transaction, would it not?
That, that it would.
Question for you. I know at the beginning of this school year, we had a number of new laws that came into place that required additional parent opt-in, opt-outs, communication, all that. I know that there was some, that was a factor for our staff to try to figure out how to make Power School do all of that. So would that make this easier going forward?
This will make this so much easier. Also, Skyward doesn't charge us for storage. Currently, we have to pay for storage and that, some, some of these, we call them plugins or add-ons. And it's almost like kind of nickel and diming on some of that. And so this is kind of an all-in-one package, yes.
Have other districts talked about the ease of staff learning it and training with it? I see on the timeline, June to October, we're going to try and get our staff all up-to-date on it. I'm just wondering what kind of burden that's going to add to our teachers.
Actually, and I don't, I don't think it will because many of our, our teachers are, if their kids are in other districts, have already used it or they've come. And as Dr. Little stated, she has used it from 2009. I also know if we need training support, we have people out there. I know Ms. Cornet used it in Wiley. A lot of people have used it, very, very familiar with it. And we actually reached out to all of those people asking, you know, asking about how their teachers, you know, and that type of thing did with the transition. And we've heard really great things.
One more question. And the, the professional services, they're going to kind of help us with some of our one-off things that we've done in Power School, right?
Yes.
So it's not just a straight Power School of migration, right?
Yes, correct. Because basically, we have, with, with Power School currently, we have kind of customized it so much that it is, it's difficult to, to use and to, especially with this new edvise system. It's not user-friendly going into that system. Does that make sense? Because it's been very customized over the past couple of years.
And then you covered this briefly, but just regarding student data privacy, since our information will be held in the cloud, that our contract would have whatever appropriate protections-
Correct.
And insurance and that sort of thing, if there were to be any issues.
Yes, and that is correct. And we have, we reached out, in fact, that was one of the questions that I asked, you know, has, has there been a data breach? There has not been one reported as of today, knock on wood. Yeah, so those, those were some questions that we, we asked that in FERPA compliance were pretty important.
All right. Well, it'll be no further questions.
Okay, thank you.
I guess we'll be done. So to summarize, there's no proposed action today. This would come back before the board at a future meeting for possible action.
In December, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eighteen is a discussion on gra, on drafts of our 2026, 2027 school calendar. Dr. Zambisi.
All right. Thank you for having me again. Tonight, we are going to take a look at some drafts and some options for the 2026, 2027 school calendar. You know, really with the, with the school calendar and the student calendar, we, we start with the end in mind and kind of work backwards from that graduation date, right? Which has, which has to do in this district and Lovejoy with our agreement with Allen Event Center, right? Where we hold our graduations and we contract that out as many years in advance as we can. But before we get into the drafts, within that first day of school and that graduation date, let's take a look at some of the requirements that we have to meet in that instructional calendar. So seventy-five thousand, six hundred instructional minutes, two bad weather makeup days, a hundred and eighty-seven teacher contract calendar days. And then in the student attendance accounting handbook, we have to be mindful of our teacher professional development days and our CTE minutes. That's ensuring we have a forty-five-minute average to get that full-weighted funding in those classes, so we have to consider that. And then keep in mind, as we see these drafts, five of your professional development days have to happen after the first day of school and before the last day of instruction. Considerations, as we, as we make the calendar and put it all together, we keep in mind the forty-five days prior to the first day of instruction that has to do with hiring of staff, right? We look at Collin County College, who we partner with for dual credit and other things. So we look at, of course, their spring break of March fifteenth through nineteenth, any spring holidays, March twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth. And we also take into consideration balancing our semesters as much as possible, fall semester days versus spring semester days. As we talked about, one thing to keep in mind, that graduation date this year. In the 2027 calendar, it's actually one week later than the previous year, which is this year. It's that May twenty-ninth, so keep that in mind as we see our drafts. Of course, those professional development days we talked about, the teacher planning days. And we also talk about feedback opportunities because we want to make sure that we hear from all different sets of stakeholders as we put this together and present drafts and then finalize options for the future year. Speaking of those opportunities, let's talk, before we get into drafts on the next slide, about current and next steps. And so we create the draft student calendars. We review the draft calendars with cabinet, principals, district leadership. Our draft calendars are then revised with this, those suggested updates. And then tonight, we're on step four, draft calendars are shared with the Board of Trustees at, tonight at the November seventeenth meeting. After tonight, that will open up those feedback opportunities that I just referenced. We'll gather feedback through district meetings from, in November and December. Those include the District Improvement Team or D I T, Teacher Superintendent Connection Council, campus staff meetings, you might hear those referred to as team huddles, parent feedback form, staff feedback form. After that, we'll review the feedback and then at the next board meeting, take all that feedback, put it together, and have that calendar ready to be approved potentially, right? After review at the December board meeting. And so we are going to head into drafts now. This first one, I want you to note that these dates are consistent on both drafts, but keep these in mind as we look. First day of school will be August twelfth in each draft compared to last year's, or this year's calendar, August seventh. A full week of fall break are included in both drafts, twelfth through sixteenth, pretty similar last year's, or this year's, thirteenth through seventeenth. Last day of school, May twenty-eighth, you get that week difference that we talked about. And then graduation, May twenty-ninth, about that, roughly a week difference. And so keep that in mind as you see that August twelfth start date because of the graduation date back towards the end of May. All right, so here is draft one on this next slide.
One question before we go to the next slide. On the, the first day of school on the twelfth, does that hurt us with the surrounding districts with the teacher contracts?
Every time that you look at that forty-five-day window, it's, it's that calculation going back. And so if we see, if we see other districts releasing drafts where they're starting earlier because their graduation's up, then there could be a small window, sometimes around five or six days, where, where technically that, that, that could happen, what you're referencing. Yes, sir. All right. To draft one, so this draft one calendar that you see up has one hundred and sixty-seven instructional days. Previous calendar had one sixty-four. First semester calculations to get to that one sixty-seven are seventy-seven in semester one and ninety in semester two. Has that same, May twenty-eighth, last day of school, graduation, May twenty-ninth. Teacher planning days included in this calendar, six. And keep this in mind as we look at draft two, the length of the instructional day within draft one stays the same as they are now. There'll be a side-by-side here after we present draft two as well, so we can talk through those changes. Okay, draft two. A hundred and sixty-nine instructional days compared to this year with one sixty-four. The first semester calculations and second semester calculations to get to that one sixty-nine are seventy-eight and ninety-one respectively. The last day of school is still May twenty-eighth, graduation, May twenty-ninth, teacher planning days, four. And here's that last bullet point to keep in mind as we review draft two, the length of the instructional day decreases by ten minutes at the end of the school day. And we can talk through it on these side-by-sides, but with the more instructional days, it then allows you to take some time off the ends of those school days in a ten-minute reduction on school times with draft two. Okay, we can toggle back to these slides as needed, but here's that side-by-side that we can have up on the big screens and up on this computer so we can answer any questions. But as you look through the first semester, you'll notice just a couple small differences. Obviously, in this box down here, the ten-minute change is reflected on draft two as compared to the top, school times on draft one.
I think we have enough. We need some more months on there.
Yeah, absolutely. And as you can see, that December eighteenth date is different. The early release days at the high school for finals there in red are shifted over one spot. And you have a teacher planning day there in draft one on the eighteenth as opposed to, as opposed to draft two. In the spring semester, February, there's a PD day, teacher planning day combination, and the PD day is moved to the twelfth on draft two. And so that gets you from that one sixty-seven in draft one to that one sixty-nine in draft And so those are the two drafts. If any questions came to mind, anything like that, anything at all, happy to answer any questions.
Would you, would you outline again for us now what, what the process would be for parent and staff feedback for these two calendars?
Absolutely. And so parent and staff feedback. So what we'll do is we'll share a presentation with our campus principals. Cabinet members, district leaders will be out at those team huddles and campus, campus meeting. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Zambisi, did you maybe want to go to, back to the slide that is titled Current and Next Steps?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And so, as referenced, these campus staff meetings or team huddles, they are, they are already pre-scheduled. This presentation, a version of it will be shared with principals, they'll have it up. District leaders will be there to support principals as needed, answer questions. The whole staff will be able to have a chance to ask questions. Within that presentation embedded, that campus principal will share the feedback form link with them. And they'll have, they'll have specific, specific questions around the components of the calendar to give us feedback that will be stored from each campus, so we can review that and consider it as needed. Additionally, this week, working with, with Mrs. Kanig, I will, we will sit down and develop the parent feedback form, and I should say, get that out this week. And so we will have that same process to get our parent feedback, be able to put it all together, meet with these committees right here, D I T, Teacher Superintendent Council to give you more voice, take feedback, and then have, have plenty of time to put that feedback into a revised draft as needed for the December board meeting.
I do like that we do have the student holiday on July third for both drafts, so I think that's good.
Thank you, sir.
No, that'd be great. And so from all of this different feedback loops, then that will inform the recommendation that comes before the board on, on, in December.
Yes, ma'am.
I think what I've learned after this many years of talking about the school calendar is that like eighty percent, ninety percent of it is like completely fixed and we're just messing with like two days one way or the other. It seems like there's so many different rules that are required on when we're in school and when we're not in school and how, how our professional development days are, are structured. So thank you for laying that all out.
Absolutely.
I, I remember when the board first adopted the teacher planning days or the extended day back in twenty-three. And I remember we had a lot of teachers come and express their concern about their workload. And I think something I would like to see before we vote in December, and maybe we'll get it through that feedback loop, is what additional supports have we added to maybe address those things that they brought forward that aren't going to be negatively impacted by taking away their teacher planning days because both options do reduce those days? So hopefully, we can get maybe an answer on that.
Yes, ma'am, a hundred percent. We can make sure to put that in the feedback form.
Dr. Tinsley, is that something that you can address right now?
Sure. So what we've, what we've done with teacher planning is that we put some measures in place. One of those is a selection of instructional materials that are more closely aligned to our standards. So some of our newer instructional materials have some built-in lesson design that the teacher's not having to create the lesson from scratch on there. Also, it's, so that has helped streamline the planning process. In addition, the unit planning guides that were not, we did not have in place when we initially put in the teacher planning days, that has really created a kind of a one-stop shop for our teachers to go to, to where they're not having to search for resources. They know it's there, but they want it for tier-two or tier-three instruction and certainly for tier-one. And there are also lessons built into that as well. So, and then just our planning process and our protocols that we've put in place of using the unit planning guides, we feel like that that has been time, time-saving for our teachers as well.
Also, I'm, I, I'm the one that checks all the days because legally, T E C code teachers have to work a hundred and eighty-seven days. But what I also, also do is I follow those rules. So every ten days, teachers have to have four hundred and fifty planning minutes. So when I look at how many planning minutes ours teachers have, so I, I'm actually, I check them. L C D C currently, they have a sixty-minute planning time instead of a forty-five minute, which gives them sixty, six hundred minutes every ten days instead of four hundred and fifty. Heart and Posture vary same thing, so they get an extra hundred and fifty minutes every ten days. The high school, Sloan Creek, Willow Springs, let's see, Sloan Creek, also, I think there's six grade, six grade has five hundred and eighty minutes, which is above the four fifty. Fifth grade has six hundred minutes. Willow Springs and the high school, just the, the course loads, they have fifty-minute blocks, and so they get, they get five hundred minutes over four fifty. But then when we count, also count all those teacher planning minutes currently in, so our teachers get, and we just kind of count, eight days, four hundred and fifty-five minutes, which is about thirty-six hundred extra minutes. So overall, we do really well with teacher planning. I just want to say that because we do have to follow that law, that legal obligation there about teacher planning days and four, and the four hundred and fifty minutes every ten days. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
One question. It, it appears that we have more five-day weeks without a holiday on either the Friday or Monday in either of these calendars. Do y'all kind of know how many more we have?
What was it? It was quite a few more. We could go back and count, but, but that's one, that was one thing that was suggested, not having so many four-day weeks, so it'd be a little bit more consistent for our kiddos.
It was around four.
Was it about four? Yeah, I think it was about.
Yeah, I think I saw that in the spring semester and with a lot of our testing happening. I appreciate that change because I know there was probably not as great of a situation with how Star fell, which we can't control, but I appreciate that difference as well.
And, and I assume you took into account the dual credit and the CTE, the additional minutes that state changed, maybe it was last year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The, that calculation, even, even on like draft two, where the time would come off the end of the school day and the ten minutes, our class period minutes would still suffice for the forty-five-plus average.
And, and of, and of course, with the SAW, we also, the, the five days, the five waiver days have to, you know, as Travis had said, after the first day of students, when students attend before the last day, and that was another change last year with the SAW.
All right. I'm going to move us along. Thank you for the opportunity for us to preview and understand the work that's going on. And to summarize, there'll be no proposed action today, and this will come back before the board at our next meeting for possible action. Thank you. We're going to continue our theme with the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, with agenda item nineteen is discussion of our twenty-six, twenty-seven budget priorities. We're not even halfway through our current school year, and we are already talking about budget for next school year. Tonight, we're going to kick off that budget cycle with a discussion on budget priorities, which will then inform our next about six budget workshops that we will have between now and June to establish our final budget. Mr. Wolman?
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Cordell. As President McLaughlin mentioned, tonight, we're going to kick off the process for the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget planning, reviewing and looking at kind of our prior budget goals as we look to establish our, our goals going into twenty-six, twenty-seven and beyond. And then also doing a review of our, our fund balance, it's a historical review going back from when we established our initial goals back in 2022 and the work that we've done to, to, to kind of, and all the budget considerations that are kind of aligned with those priorities and then kind of what our next steps are. But before we get started into the budget conversation, I'm excited to share some great news for the district. Earlier this month, we received word from T E A that our first rating has, had been finalized, and I'm happy to share that. We did receive a ninety-two out of one hundred, which is a, an A, which is a, a superior achievement. We will bring forward in December and have our public meeting that will go through the Texas first rating for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, which is based off the data from the twenty-three, twenty-four year. We were not able to do it in this, this board meeting, given the, kind of the restrictions that we must follow as far as posting ahead of time that we're holding the public meeting. We have to do that and give the community enough time for them to be aware that the public meeting is going to be held, so that way, if they wanted to attend or make any comments, they're, they're available to do that. So we will bring forward the presentation and the review in the December- We were not able to do it in this, this board meeting, given the, kind of the restrictions that we must follow as far as posting ahead of time that we're holding the public meeting. We have to do that and give the community enough time for them to be aware that the public meeting is going to be held. So that way, if they wanted to attend or make any comments, they're, they're available to do that. So we will bring forward the presentation and the review in the December, December meeting. So exciting news for the district, really, really proud of all the work that we've done to, to get us to that, to that A rating. So as we look back at our, our previous budget priorities, the board established clear priorities back in twenty twenty-two. And it was driven by ensuring the overall fiscal health. So when we look at those four priorities that were established for the twenty-two, twenty-three planning, it was focused around four key areas. The first area was the fund balance. We wanted to, as we established this, was to restore increasing and then maintaining a healthy fund balance. That would be more than ninety days, given that when we ended the twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty, twenty-year, we are at roughly about seventy-eight, which created some uncertainties as it relates to our cash flow, operating cash flow and cash on hand that would address payroll needs in the month of November and December. We also focused and looked at employee compensation. We wanted to provide competitive compensation to attract and retain highly qualified staff. And then looking at the two main drivers of our, our funding, which is enrollment and attendance. So looking at our attendance and implementing strategies to improve our, our daily student attendance rates, but then also focusing on initiatives to increase student enrollment. These four priorities drove us for a few years, going from twenty twenty-two, twenty-three all the way through the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. And then as we entered in last year, going through the twenty-five, twenty-six planning cycle, the administration and the board collectively identified two additional priorities, which was safety and security, and then the student educational experience. So we can see here, we maintain, we, we have five priorities here for the twenty-five, twenty-six. We maintain the four core ones, but we just lumped in enrollment and attendance as one priority. So when we look at our historical fund balance, you can see here, as I mentioned, we started, we ended the year, the fiscal year of twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one with eight point five million in fund balance, which represented about seventy-eight days of fund balance. So you can see the positive trend that we've had from over the past four years, growing our fund balance from the eight point five to roughly nine, nineteen point three million, increasing that days of fund balance from seventy-eight to a hundred and eighty, which provides a stronger financial position for the district. While we're thankful for the, the funding increase that we did receive from this past legislative session, there's still, there still presents funding challenges that will play a role in our planning as we work toward achieving a future fund balance target. As you can see in the twenty-five, twenty-six year where we're anticipating a deficit budget and reducing that fund balance from a hundred and eighty days on one fifty-one.
Mr. Wilmann and I really wanted to pause on this slide and recognize the efforts of our Board of Trustees, each and every one of our staff members, and the patient support and trust of our parents and community in this process, because this has not been easy to go from seventy-eight days of fund balance. And then you'll see, we were able to build that up last school year to a hundred and eighty days. There has been strategy and sacrifice and adjustment and reorganization. And again, that, that trust and patience and support throughout that process has been something that we are deeply grateful for. And there's also been a relentless focus on continuing to focus on the student experience, student opportunities, and continuing our legacy of excellence, which is challenging in an environment of declining enrollment and state funding challenges. And those are two things that we will continue to contend with and have to work strategically to have both a midterm and long-term financial plan in place for.
Thank you. So as we think about the fund balance and kind of what our target is, part of our, our discussion that we'd like to have with you is to identify what we believe is the minimum number of operating days of fund balance that we should hold as we plan for not only the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, but going into, into the future years. So the ideal, the ideal target for a district like, like ours, where we depend heavily on local tax collection for cash flow, it would be anywhere in a range of ninety to a hundred and twenty days to ensure that we have healthy days of cash on hand to meet the needs when, when we have more cash outflow than we do inflow. So other work that we've done as part of the budget cycles over the, the last few years is that we've remained committed to competitive compensation. And it's reflected over the past few years, going back from the twenty twenty-two to the twenty twenty-six, where when we look at teacher compensation, we have, we've been able to increase overall teacher compensation by an average of eighteen point five percent. Recognizing that the recent legislation did mandate additional increase of, of approximately ten percent, which is roughly the, it depends on where, where the staff sits on the, the pay scale, the four, the four thousand dollar increase or the eight thousand dollar increase. But not only focus on teacher compensation, we've also looked, been able to focus on increasing all non-scale staff. So we're looking at our support staff, like our instructional aides. We're looking at our student nutrition staff, our bus drivers and our administrative staff. We've had an average increase to only eight percent going from twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six.
Is that an average over the four years or each year?
It's average over the, the four years. So cumulatively over the four years, it's been eight percent. Great question. So our objective as we've looked for, looked towards planning for the, the next few years is to remain competitive in our region. The state increased, put us at that position where we are competitive with teacher pay. And we want to, we want to maintain that competitiveness within our region. Our challenges are going to be with the, the new legislative mandates and kind of the market pressures. I mean, we'll have to continually review our compensation structures. And then just prioritizing and just balancing the need for attractive compensation within our overall operational budget, knowing that on a go for, going forward, we do anticipate a deficit budget. So as it relates to enrollment and attendance, as I mentioned, these are our two main drivers when it comes to funding. Enrollment, then that, then translated into the actual daily attendance impacts state funding. So we've done a lot of work over the past four years when looking at our budgets and our declining enrollment and scaling our cost to that enrollment from looking at our, our staffing, staffing models, our student staff ratios, but then also looking at our non-personnel and finding opportunities to adjust based off of enrollment decline, while also looking at implementing and expanding on the scholars program. That was a, a key initiative in order to increase enrollment here in the district. So as part of the discussions that we would like to have, not only tonight, but going forward in future budget workshops, is look, having the conversation around, as I mentioned, what, how are we defining a, a healthy fund balance? And what is that, what is that number, whether it's ninety days or the hundred and twenty, or somewhere in between that range? But then also having conversations and looking and reviewing kind of the overall sustainability and the impact that our, our recent compensation increases have, have resulted in. And then also looking at kind of the different, evaluating our enrollment and attendance initiatives. We've done a lot of work. We started where we are slightly below ninety-five percent in attendance. And our goal last year was to get to ninety-six percent. And all the work that was put forth in that led us to a ninety, slightly higher than a ninety-six, I think ninety-six point oh-three, Dr. Zanbazy? Yep, attendance rate, so we'll continue. I, I always tell my girls on my softball team that we want to be one percent better every time we step out on the field. So if we can be one percent better with attendance rate, that, that would amount to about three hundred thousand dollars extra. So I think we can be one percent better. What do you think, Dr. Zanbazy? Let's do it. And then I'd, also then identifying strategic budget priorities for the upcoming year. So as we, as we have these discussions and conversations around budget priorities and moving forward the budget, I think it's a great opportunity to answer the question that Ms. Talk had during the special education budget presentation. While there was no additional expenses, staffing needs, I think it's important for, for us to know that as it relates to special education funding, there is something that's in place called maintenance of effort. So in order for us to maintain our federal funding, we have to maintain the same level of spending year in and year out, whether that is a cumulative total dollar spend or on a per-student basis. If we don't maintain that same level of spend, then the district will be required to pay back that federal funding and that discrepancy. So essentially, if any reduction in, in expenses would then just become, so that's paying it back to the state in the form of reimbursing the federal funds. So I think that's an important piece to, to know about the special education funding. So before I move on to kind of the next steps, I would like to open up any conversations as it relates to the fund balance and then any other strategic budget priorities you would like for us to consider as we start going into the budget development.
Yeah, Thomas, with respect to sped, sped funding, I understand there's a new model that's going in place for the next year, not this current year, but next year, based on a needs assessment-based funding as opposed to a per-student, one-size-fits-all model. I'm assuming as part of this next budget process, we're going to be speculating quite a bit as to what that is going to look like?
Absolutely. What we know right now is they anticipate they're going to release some information on how that will work sometime in probably January, February timeframe. So hopefully we'll have a little bit more information and we're not speculating too much. But that would be the earliest that we'd be able to have a sense of what that new funding model would look like with special education.
Thomas, can you go back to the fund balance slide, the years? So that seventy-eight days of fund balance is for some of the board. I think we need to revisit what that fund balance looks like here. We have unique cash flow challenges that other districts may not face because of we are funding off tax collections. And we have to float a fair amount of money. At that eight point five million, I can tell you distinctly from memory that we have about two hundred thousand dollars left in the bank in floating our cash flows to meet our obligations. So while you can think about this fund balance in a lot of ways, it's imperative that we maintain a healthy fund balance. If one thing I wouldn't, I would like to see or have some effort behind is what kind of cash flow, what I would call float, do we have to manage as a district? So that as the board thinks about what we're going to keep in fund balance, we would know maybe what that number looks like intuitively. And I know that it's beyond the seventy-eight now. We had calculated it once before, I think it was closer to ninety days to cash flow, the district. So I don't see that as a, I don't see that as a feasible threshold that we should even consider based on that information that I recall. But I would like to get refreshed on that, so that when we do talk about that, we're, we're thinking about it with what we really have to manage, which is cash flow.
Yep, absolutely. I can definitely bring, bring that forward in the December board meeting.
Yeah, I'll just add my voice to that. I mean, I think your question was the range of fund balance being, and we had discussed in prior years that that ninety to one twenty. I think what I'm hearing from the board is that, that's still the right target for us. And then I think, you know, in later years, we're up above that one twenty. And I just see that as stabilization for the district, right? It helps support in the uncertainty two years and three years from now, what the legislature may or may not choose to do with regards to school funding. And so that, that additional cash there says to me that we will weather not only just the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, we will weather future years.
Yeah, if you recall that, that million that it was cut to was cut in the eleventh hour because we were expecting going into that to be about two point something million behind. And so I think, you know, a number, a hundred and twenty-plus is, anyway, I just, I'd be real concerned about going anywhere near below one twenty based on what I know. But I'd like to get refreshed on that so we can all be educated about what we think that looks like.
Yep, absolutely.
And then also, Thomas, if you can look at the next month or so, look at our current budget to see if you think we're, the deficit's going to improve for, for the year? Because if that, if, if it's really only going to be half a million dollar deficit, that's going to make a big difference too for our next budget.
No, absolutely. And I, I think, the thing to also consider that within that deficit is that three hundred thousand dollar contingency, so long as no surprises occur, and that's going to improve right there in itself. So I'll definitely dive in. I do think there will probably be opportunities for us to, to reduce that, that deficit.
And we'll, we'll still have some unfilled positions that we budgeted for, I'm assuming in, in, currently and in the spring.
And so we, we do have some, we do have some current unfilled positions. I'll, I'll remind you that part of this one point one million, we did have three unfilled teaching positions that we decided that we are not going to, that we did not need to fill. And that we've already made that reduction and it's already captured in this, this one point one million.
I would make sure that we have on the table that our fill rate for our positions is at a much higher level than it has been. Historically, we've had open positions in custodial, maintenance, student nutrition, and it is very exciting that in several cases, we are fully staffed and have been. So that is wonderful because our students and our staff are getting the support that they need. The challenge with that is then we don't see the additional savings in terms of the deficit.
Absolutely, good point.
I definitely agree with prioritizing the fund balance. I think something else I might want to see more about is maybe academic support. I think we've had a lot of meetings about student achievement data. We've had our principals and district leaders present goals. We've identified challenges. And I just want to make sure that we're honoring that work by making sure we're doing our part as the board and making sure that we, we know what academic supports we might need to add. Something that comes to mind is I know we have that part-time tier-two tutor that's being split between the two elementary campuses. Maybe that's something that we extend or we look at if, if our students need additional support. That's just something that's very specific. But I want to make sure that maybe we're looking more at the academic support that might be needed, especially if we're going to reduce teacher planning days too. So maybe we'll get that feedback again in December and it'll inform the discussion.
Right, thank you for that information.
Could we toggle to your, your five budget priority slides? So I think just, I want to make sure we honor your questions tonight. So we talked about what was the guidance on fund balance. We're still hearing ninety to a hundred and twenty days. Mr. Owens would like to speak closer to one twenty. And then we have these five budget priorities. So from the board, do we have consensus on these being the right budget priorities for us or anything else we'd like to discuss?
I think when we added the two additional priorities last year, we had good conversation, and I think those, in my mind, all still apply. I think Aubrey's comments probably could fit very neatly within the student educational experience. It's a matter of how we, how we really detail out what we mean within these high-level priorities though.
Yeah, having kind of worked so well on many of these priorities, I was focused on, when I was reviewing these slides over the weekend, on that student educational experience and really focusing in on that and trying to see if we can really improve that over and above than just recapturing maybe some of the things we've lost in the past years due to our funding challenges.
I think, and I don't know if we need to go through like a stack ranking to prioritize within our pri, I mean, five priorities is a lot. It's, it's hard for you to hit all of them. But like enrollment and attendance, I think we're in a better place now because of the emphasis we've placed on it. And, and not to say that we want to lose, lose track of it or go backwards, but it might be time to emphasize some of these other areas.
That's fair.
I don't want to de-emphasize enrollment and attendance because as you've seen our numbers and demography reports, they're going in the wrong direction.
I feel like the priorities are strategic. And I think that in any given year, we're going to have a need to focus more in certain areas than others. But to say that one of these five is not an area that we need to be paying strategically attention to, I would struggle with that. I do agree with all the comments, but I think in different years, there's a different level of focus in different areas. And I like what we have here. I think it captures the holistic approach to our budgeting process, even though we may expend more hours and efforts in one area than another, but they're all on the table. I feel like we, stewarding our funds as best we possibly can by keeping them all in mind.
Yeah, I would just agree with that. I don't think any of those five are dispensable. I think they're all a necessary part of this process. And there's, as we learned, having been on this board in fiscal year twenty to twenty-one, there are just some things you cannot overlook when you're doing, when you're doing, you know, the projected math of, of a budget. And fund balance is certainly one of those, enrollment and attendance and compensation. And I, I think some of these things we've added, the, the last two, student educational experience and safety, security are more reflective of our board priorities that we've been kind of put into the budget analysis, which I think is appropriate and necessary.
All right. Do we, do we think we answered, could we go back to that question, slides on the things we needed to cover? So we...
Yeah, I think, I think we've confirmed it, or the, the two main ones were the first and the fourth one. And if I could recap what we're, what I thought, what I, what I thought I heard is that as it relates to fund balance, just repeating the 90 and the 120 with kind of Mr. Owens wanting it to be closer to the 120.
I just want you to educate the board what cash flow needs we have.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. So I'll, I'll bring that.
Basically, you got to go from August to November when Robert's act comes in, figure out what your future cost is.
Absolutely. Yep, I can definitely bring that back in, in December so that we can have a sense of what our, kind of our net outflows are and how much we're fronting during that period. And then looking at student educational experiences, really looking at academic supports and what the needs are there and then potentially whatever, what can we bring back as far as the things that may have been that we've had in the past that, as an opportunity to bring back going forward. And then the, the five priorities are still the, the right priorities. Is there anything specific as it relates to the student educational experiences where you want to see any type of cost analysis rather than just being, or you want us to come back with, with the different academic supports? Or are there specific ones that you would want to see that we would bring forward in, in future meetings?
No, I would agree. Thank you for highlighting that. I think what I'm hearing from the board is that we have consensus on the, on the five priorities, but possibly a different definition of what student educational experience means. And so rather than maybe solutioning that today, if the, if the, if the administration can bring that forward in your first budget workshop in terms of how that's being defined, and that way we could get into a little bit more clarity.
Okay, perfect.
Because I'm hearing academic headcount, I'm hearing maybe class sizes, I'm hearing maybe programs, and that can mean different things to us.
Okay, perfect.
And then I'll just close by kind of reiterating what Mr. James said. We want to acknowledge the level of work that this takes. This is not an easy math problem that we just gave you in terms of the amount of funding that we have and all of the things that we'd like to see done. And so we appreciate the attention to detail and the opportunity to provide the feedback upfront.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. With that, I'm going to move us forward into our next agenda. We have agenda item number, oh, we had a next steps one, I think. Apologies. Go ahead.
No, I'm more than happy to, to move on if you'd like. So now as far as next steps, so for next month, we'll bring forward in budget workshop one, all the things that we discussed here. And then also during that meeting, we'll also do the, the public hearing for the Texas School First Rating. And then from December through February, we'll be working alongside each of our, our department heads to really identify some of those different areas, programmatic needs, areas for opportunities for savings, and really like diving into each individual budget. But then also by that time, by the end of February, hopefully we'll have an updated revenue estimate, estimate with an updated template that would incorporate the special education funding. And then the goal would be that in the March meeting that we'd bring forward the preliminary budget based off of the conversation that we're having the, and the, the, the next few months with the updated revenue, but then also be able to look at a multi-year look ahead on what the, what some of those different things would, would do to the overall budget for the next two years. And then the goal this year, because it's not a legislative session, hopefully we have a little bit more certainty that we can bring forward a, a budget for your recommendation in May rather than in June.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Agenda item number 20 is an update from our board legislative subcommittee. Mr. James?
Thank you. As a committee, we've started work on developing a legislative calendar to help guide us as we move through this non-legislative session year. When we started the committee, gosh, four years ago or whenever, I think it was four years ago, we did, we, we did it right before a legislative session. And so we, we were very reactive and trying to be effective. But now if we, as we've moved through the last few years, I think we're getting better at being organized on how, how to be more effective and have a purpose with our, with our planning. This calendar, we, we've started a very, very rough draft and I've gotten some feedback from some of the board about that rough draft. We've also looked at some third-party resources to see how we can, kind of figuring out how to balance being both detailed to, to have it be effective, but then also have it be somewhat open-ended to where we can be flexible and adjust as, as reality unfolds because we know that our legislature here in Texas can be unpredictable at times. So we're going to, we're going to work through that process and as we continue to work as a board and I continue to get feedback, we'll be bringing a updated version of that calendar to deliberate on in more detail.
Talk through some of your early thoughts on, on kind of directional budget, directional priorities that you guys are thinking through.
Yeah, part of the, part of this calendar is going, one of the first items, either late this year or early next year, is going to be updating and continuing to refine our legislative priorities. I know through our initial conversations that looking at ways to be effective with our legislators and, and looking at things like where I think we are exemplary as a district is in an area of safety and security. We had a presentation earlier tonight about our pilot program with Fujitsu. That's just the tip of the iceberg on all the different things we're doing within that realm of safety and security. So using what we have is what I consider to be best-in-class and working with state legislators to figure out how we can be a model and also figure out if there's ways to plug funding gaps because we know having that effective safety and security program is, is expensive and we, we don't get funding to cover even close to, to all of what we're doing. So some of the things that I, I think a lot of our priorities are going to be similar to what we've seen in the past, but that's, that's one area where we've been spending a lot of time talking about as a committee, how do we take what we're doing and, and moving it forward to something that could really help us from a funding perspective and see if we could be a resource for, for other districts for what we're doing, doing well here.
What came to mind is, you know, we've had in advance of the legislative session, of course, we're going into primary season with all of our elected representatives. Noticed some of the part, some of the platforms that are coming out involve school taxation. And I think that might be another area for us to understand. I've already had some parent questions on how would this impact Lovejoy? And of course, I think there's more questions than answers at this point, but that would be kind of an interesting thing for us to discuss as a board to is, is awareness of that particular potential issue.
So I'll close just, some of you have already provided some feedback on ideas around the calendar. If any, any, any additional feedback anybody has, I welcome it. Same thing on the, on the topic of priorities, so.
Any other suggestions on priorities or topics? All right. Thank you. We will bring this forward for a future board meeting. All right. Agenda item number 21 is to consider an act on the Lovejoy 2030 Strategic Planning Committee membership. If you'll recall, we received a presentation on the Lovejoy 2030 Strategic Plan Proposed Refresh Process at our September workshop. And then we approved the charter of this committee at our September 29th meeting. The matter before us today is to consider approval on the proposed committee membership. Ms. Cordell?
I'll make a motion to approve the committee as presented.
Second?
In a second. In terms of discussion, were there any other remarks that you wanted to make?
Yes, thank you. Board, we are excited to begin preparing for our strategic plan update. Stakeholder participation is an important part of this process. We are pleased to be bringing you an administrative recommendation this evening for your consideration. In order to further maximize stakeholder participation in this process, we would also recommend that we keep the application open for a couple more weeks and then we bring you a second round of applicants for your consideration of approval at the December meeting.
The administrative recommendation is to approve the committee members as presented with a possible additional tranche of committee members at the December meeting. We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. Thank you. Motion carries. All right. As we come to close to the end of our meeting tonight, we have announcements. Agenda item 22, Superintendent, Ms. Cordell.
Thank you. I just want to thank our administration, our teachers and staff for all of their efforts. We had several presentations this evening that represent a tremendous amount of planning work and effort to make sure that we continue our commitment to continuous improvement and excellence. We also wanted to share that we have implemented a new teacher team recognition this school year. We have something called the Leopard Excellence Team Awards. And this is for teams, teaching teams that in body are non-negotiables for high levels of student learning and that is planning for rigorous, standards-aligned instruction. It is consistently facilitating active and engaging student learning and using assessment for driving instruction and assessing proficiency. We are thrilled to share that we've already had three teams recognized. The Hart Elementary Fourth Grade Mathematics Team, the Willow Springs Middle School Eighth Grade Social Studies this team. And we started off our day this morning over at Sloan Creek Intermediate School, celebrating the Sixth Grade RLA team. So great job to these teams and we can't wait to celebrate even more. Speaking of celebrations and a commitment to academic excellence, we are also thrilled to share that we have had 469 Lovejoy High School students that have been recognized for earning AP Scholar Awards or recognitions. This is remarkable. And to put this in perspective, that is 30% of our high school population. And if we look historically in terms of our data, back in spring of 2021, it was 17% of our high school student population. So every year, we continue to make a leap forward. And when you consider that our high school population has declined and you consider that we talked about some of the financial limitations, struggles, adjustments we've had to make, the fact that we have continued to make a priority academic support for our students, a level of excellence, and have kept that at the forefront and our students are achieving this level of results is truly impressive. So hats off to all of our AP teachers and our Lovejoy High School administration for this hard work.
Ms. Cordell? So as we close our meeting tonight, I do have a few items to share. So earlier this evening, we talked about the Lovejoy 2030 Committee. One of the first events is going to be actually tomorrow evening with our Lovejoy 2030 Listening Circles. So hopefully you have seen communication come from the district inviting you to this event. Members of the board will be participating along with district administration in the Listening Circles. And this found, this feedback is going to be foundational to our work in refreshing the Lovejoy 2030 Strategic Plan. We know how busy life can be, but we truly, truly hope that you will take advantage of this opportunity. We hope to see our parents and our students and others from our community there to join that conversation. We want to hear your perspective. Additionally, this week is kind of the culmination of an important tradition here in Lovejoy, which is the Lovejoy Letter Campaign. And just in the spirit of thankfulness and gratefulness, on behalf of the board, we extend our sincere thank you and our deep appreciation to the staff of Lovejoy ISD. We're so grateful that you're here. We recognize the tremendous impact that you make on a daily basis with our students. And also a thank you to our dedicated PTO for coordinating and sorting all of the Lovejoy letters. So with that, I'll close by saying the board's next regular meeting will be Monday, December 15th. We wish our Lovejoy families a joy-filled and restful Thanksgiving holiday. And with that, we're adjourned. Mark has rubbed off on me. We are adjourned. Thank you.